We're gonna all start the meeting. I would like everyone to stand up and salute the flag. Welcome to our board meeting. For the July 27th board meeting, I call this meeting to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th, 2023, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. This is a no-smoking area, and by state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call?
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Sintron.
Present.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Here.
Mrs. Fleming.
Present.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Present.
Ms. Thomas and Dr. Burghammer.
Present. Our next agenda item is to approve the minutes. I would like someone to make the motion to approve the minutes, please.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Ms. Fleming, thank you for coming. I know that you are having a hard time right out there physically, but you are with us. We want to show appreciation for your attendance. Our next agenda item is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forth at this moment. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
Craig Haller, 120 Donaldson Place. I'm questioning or just want some information on page 40 in the Finance Report. Item number 17, it's the Title III program, I believe, $25,000 for some service.
Want me to say? What item number?
Number 17 on page 40.
Please respond.
This, the Title III immigrant, which is a new grant, well, not a new grant, but a grant that we're getting this year that we haven't received in the past. This is for outsourcing services in part to do with adult involvement and adult communications. And it is, again, it's being charged to our Title III grant.
Okay, you said this money is a grant, so it's coming from another government agency?
Yes, federal government.
Okay, all right, that answers my question. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Now, just relating to item number 17, I want you to know part of this program is for Adult Education Center programs. At the ending of the meeting tonight, in our new business, you will have an opportunity to hear from Assistant Superintendent, who is gonna be explaining to you some of the programs that we're gonna be introducing in night school. I think it is wonderful, it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity that we are bringing back a night program to our community. And I urge any member of the public who have some educational project that they would like to possibly teach to our young ones and even our adults, I would really like to hear from them. I know that if they get a class in learning how to speak Spanish, count me in, because I would love to be a student learning to speak Spanish. Our next agenda item will be our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. It is truly a pleasure to sit here and share my first official superintendent report to all of our... I want to thank the Board again for the relationships that we are beginning to build. And when I think about the vision for our district, two words have been coming to my mind that will be shared out later on, and that is strengthening relationships. And what we've gone through this past year and where we're planning to go is always going to be built on strengthening relationships. So some of the things that I've seen these last few days that I've been in this position includes the hard work and dedication of all of our staff members. I like to start with saying thank you to all of our administrators, to all of our members of our Board of Education, as well as in the Board Office. Conversations have been built around, "How am I going to do this?" But I am doing it. Where are we going? But I know the answer. And more importantly, we have to do what's best for children. Those are really my words, but that's what I gathered from the conversations as we're putting forth and preparing for the next school year. I've also had the opportunity to talk to some of our anticipated new hires that are on the agenda for this evening, and they are just as excited as all of our dedicated staff members that are already on our roll. So I do believe that we are going to kick off strengthening relationships and also learn from each other. So a few things that have also taken place is that we have retire retirements coming up. And I'd like to, excuse me, acknowledge the two retirees that are on the agenda this evening. It's Ms. Denise Hughes and Mr. Michael White. Ms. Hughes is a dedicated member of the Linden Public Schools since 1996, and she has put in 26 years as a part-time aide and a para-professional, all at School Number Eight. And when I spoke with Ms. Rodriguez, the principal, I had asked her a question about Ms. Hughes, and her response was, "Oh, wow, I love her. I'm really going to miss her." And I said, "Well, that's enough said. When you have a building principal who really takes a moment to acknowledge a person's dedication and believe that it's built on a place where it results in love, then Ms. Hughes is doing a great thing." So we wish her well after 26 years here in our district. And then we have, oh, go ahead, I thought... We have Mr. Michael White, and he has been working in the Linden Public Schools District for 17 years. He started in 2006 as a crisis interventionist aide, and he has been at the Linden High School, Seoul, and ending in his place at McManus, and his retirement date is October. I worked with Mr. White for the few years that I was at McManus, and one of the things that he shared with me is that, "Listen, the students and I are here to work together. They'll tell me more than..." He said they would tell him more than they would tell me, and it was built on making those relationships with them. And that's great, because we need people on the floor where children felt valued and could trust an adult to share what was going on. So we wish Mr. White an amazing upcoming retirement. Today, we had our summer programming, ending today, for our ESY continues. But for summer programming, we had our summer bridge, and it was truly nice, I was able to get over to Seoul, and they had a summer gallery, I'm sorry, a gallery walk, where they presented on language arts and math. And the counselors, the teachers, the principals, they've all said the same thing. While it may have been hot today, they showed up because they knew the children would show out, and they had a really great time. So I'm thankful, and thank you to all of the staff members who participated in summer programming. While I was at Seoul today, I saw one of my previously students that I had in elementary, and his name is Chris Ordonis. And I'm shouting him out, as well as another student, Isabella Gonzalez, because they've been recognized by Junior Achievement for their participation in the High School Hero Scholar Award. And they've both been awarded scholarships. Isabella will be attending Keene University, and Chris will be attending New York University College of Nursing. And we are just so excited that they get an opportunity to further their learning and now that they've been recognized. And when I saw Chris, I said to him, "Wow, did you expect this?" And his response was, "Yes, I did." And he's not planning to stop. So congratulations to Chris and Isabella. I'd like to also extend congratulations to our students who received the Seal of Biliteracy. And the Seal of Biliteracy is when students are become proficient in more than one language during their high school years. We had 71 graduating seniors who did receive the Seal of Biliteracy. And Ms. Orlean, who is our supervisor for our ESL program, she attended an event this week at the Linden Library ran by the New Jersey Department of Education, where three of our students who received the Seal of Biliteracy for Haitian Creole, Womika, Sina Kline, Clara Toussaint, and Sarah Emil for their exceptional work with establishing and receiving the Seal of Biliteracy. So I'd like to just shout them out as well. So as we move forward, you know our district stands for being a district of distinction, and we have high expectations for everyone. So as we continue to move through July and go into August, at our work session on Tuesday, we talked about information that you can find on our website for summer reading, as well as math reinforcement, so students are not put in a position to have the summer slide. So we are very thankful that, again, to our Technology Department for all that is available on our website. And also, I shared on Tuesday that we are very excited. Our social media is up and running. We are here to share the narrative about our district more than ever this year. So please, our new Twitter handle is up on there. We pushed it out on Tuesday. We had 91 followers within three hours, and now we're at 120, and we do expect for more to come on to Twitter. But more importantly, we're all over on social media, Facebook, as well as Instagram. And again, our goal is to create the narrative of the great things that's happening here in our district. So I just wanna close out with this. I met a teacher. You know that, we talked the other day on Tuesday about students residing in Linden. And we have one of our teachers at the high school, who's, he does not live in Linden, but he did put in the request to pay for tuition for his 12th grade daughter to attend high school. And the reason he wanted that to happen was because he believes that this is the best place for his daughter to get an education. He spoke about his daughter being in NJROTC and other phenomenal programs in the high school. And while I was out visiting students, the staff member was there, and he was excited to see me, but I was more excited to see him. Because as a staff member dedicated into our district who truly believes that this is the best place, not just for him and his family, but also his daughter, then we're doing great things. So I just wanted to put that out there again as we push forward into the '23-'24 school year. Get ready to strengthen relationships. Thank you.
Guys, did you hear that? This is one of the best places to send your children to high school. You know why? Because this year, of the 425 students that graduate, approximate over 350 of them are college-bound. Let's give them a hand. If that is not amazing, I don't know what is. As a Board President, I want each and every one of you to know that this Board, this Board, all these beautiful ladies and this handsome man standing here, we all see you. And we would hope that you see us. Because that's how we make it even better, by being able to really see each other, listen to each other, learn together, grow together, and teach our children the right way to be a better human being. Right? Our next agenda item is our Attorney Report.
No report this evening, Madam President.
So we are gonna go to Education Report?
Yes. The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve 1 through 34. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any comments? Anybody have anything that they would like to talk about before we move to a vote?
Be good. Be good.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Oh, sorry.
Yes?
Yes. Our next agenda item is our Personnel Report.
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state and school aid and other revenue funding. I approve items 1 through 31, and I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Superintendent, we got, do a roll call.
Do a roll call.
All right, so roll call.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. You know, when great things are happening... Listen, guys, when great things are happening, I'm like a child in the candy store. I cannot just sit here and let you guys have all the fun. So I would like to invite up some of our amazing, amazing people who have gotten some great jobs, but come with a big job...
A big responsibility.
Comes a big responsibility. So I'm gonna lead, I'm gonna turn it over to your new superintendent to introduce these people.
Thank you, Madam President. It is truly an honor for me to acknowledge members of our executive leadership team and also our administrative team. While we also have approved tonight teachers, paras, aides, and all other support staff, again, as I spoke to many of you, I say thank you. You are a tiger now, and we look forward to hearing you roar. But I have to start with saying to Ms. Principato, who is now appointed as the Principal for School Number Nine. Congratulations, Ms. Principato. We work together on a leadership team as principal and vice-principal. And the one thing that I've always seen in you is that your hard work and dedication. You would be there 5 o'clock before the custodians, if you could. And there were days when I said, "At 10 o'clock, you need to go home." But it was because that you saw that the students needed you to be systems and practices in place and ready to go. So thank you. I know you're gonna do a phenomenal job at School Number Nine, and we are here to support you.
Ms. Principato, could we hear a little bit from you tonight? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Angela Principato, 2115 Sami Charis, Linden Public Schools. Before I even start, my big thanks to Ms. Perkins, because I learned...
Could you speak into the mic a little? Speak a little more, yes.
I learned from her how to speak publicly, because I'm very shy. So I learn from the best. It's a pleasure tonight to be here, and I wanna thank you, Ms. Perkins, Superintendent of School, Ms. Bergman, the Board President, and all the members of the Board tonight. It is with great honors that I stand here tonight to thank you for giving me the excellent opportunity to continue serving the Linden Public School in the new role of elementary principal. I'm grateful for your trust and confidence in my ability and looking forward to starting my new professional journey at School Number Nine. I honestly, I can't wait to meet the staff and especially the students and become part of the great family of School Nine. A family that I know as a parent because all my three children attend School Nine in the past. I had the privilege to experience that already. I will tireless work to ensure that all students receive equal access to high-quality education in a safe, caring, inclusive learning environment where everyone feels a sense of belonging. I welcome you to involvement and participate in our school activity and looking forward for a great 2023-24 school year. Thank you again.
And now, I'd like to formally welcome you, Ms. Annabelle Lewis. To our executive leadership team as our Assistant Superintendent for Academic Support. To your family, who's here with you this evening. You look good, and it's a great testament to who Ms. Lewis is. To all of the support that you have in this room, Ms. Lewis, it's because of what you do. I met Ms. Lewis, when she came to the district, she came to do her student teaching, her internship. I was a vice principal at the time, and she did a phenomenal job as a social worker in the elementary school level, where the principal and I both knew that you belonged here in Linden. And it was because of the way that you supported the students and the staff. It was very natural for helping children feel a part of a community and, more importantly, just belonging. And then I've seen you grown through the district in the multiple positions that you've had. And there was never any doubt that when questions were brought to you, that you would take on the charge to figure it out. So thank you for being a problem solver, saying yes, and continuing the journey to help lead our district. Congratulations.
Wow. Good evening, everyone. I stand before you, both humbled and honored, and I would truly like to take a moment to thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Mrs. Perkins for your trust in me to serve as the Assistant Superintendent for Support for Linden Public Schools. Linden has filled my heart for the last 17 years of my career, which I began, as Ms. Perkins said, at School Number Four, serving as a social work intern under her leadership. And it is truly an honor now to have the opportunity to serve alongside you, Ms. Perkins. Throughout my career, doing what's in the best interest of our students and community has always been at the forefront of every decision that I've made. And I'm eager to continue to forge ahead as we move the needle forward. To our incredible staff throughout the district, you are the backbone of our schools. Your passion, your commitment, and your dedication have a profound impact on the lives of the students that we work with every day. I am committed to supporting you and providing the resources necessary to enhance your practice and ensure a positive and rewarding environment for everyone. To our parents and guardians, you are our essential partners along this journey. Your involvement and support are both crucial in fostering and nurturing, nurturing learning environment for our students. Let us work hand in hand to empower our young minds and prepare them for the future. To our students, you're the reason we're here. You're the reason we get up every day and do what we do. And as educators, we find our greatest reward in the lives of the students that we touch each day. Together, we will strive to create an inclusive and safe space for each one of you where you can thrive and reach your full potential. To our Board of Education and Mrs. Perkins, as we move forward together, I assure you that I will continue to uphold the values of our district. I will lead with the three Cs. Collaboration, communication, and commitment will be at the cornerstone of my leadership. I am eager to listen to your ideas and your concerns, and together, we will shape the future of our district and ensure that it remains a beacon of excellence. of our district and ensure that it remains a beacon of excellence. Lastly, I would be remiss if I did not thank my family for their unwavering support. As the child of Haitian immigrants, I witnessed the relentless sacrifices of my parents, who instilled in me the values of faith, a strong work ethic, and good character. My parents have always placed an emphasis on the value of education and stress that it can open doors and opportunities for my siblings and I. Nelson Mandela once said, "Education is the most powerful tool that can change the world," and this statement could not be more true. Together with the education that we provide our students, I know that they'll leave prepared to change the world. Thank you.
Ms. Perkins, I'm having so much fun. Can I hear from someone else?
Of course, Madam President.
Would you like to hear from someone else?
Why not? Let's go for it.
Okay, all right, well, I liked now, I didn't add this in the beginning, because we were talking about appointments, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the transfer that's on tonight's agenda for Ms. Rochelle Crawley, who I had the pleasure of working with. We served together as she served as my vice principal. Now, this is a phenomenal woman who really has a passion for children. And Ms. Crawley was a social worker, she was in the high school, she served as a vice principal in elementary, and then she served as vice principal at the high school. And now she is going down to serve as the middle school vice principal, because her words, not mine, is that she wants to be able to support and learn from all of the students within our district. So Ms. Crawley, congratulations on your move, and we wish you the best. Now, Dr. Burghammer, our Madam President, would like for you to come to the podium.
But I just want to say thank you so much, Ms. Perkins. Thank you so much to the Board for giving me this opportunity to make this transition in my professional career. I look forward to working with the middle school students and helping them transition to high school, since I know what is expected at the high school level. So it's something that I'm really looking forward to, and I just thank you all so much for this opportunity. And I also want to say congratulations to Mrs. Principato, and congratulations to Ms. Lewis, and we look forward to all that you're going to bring to the district. Thank you so much, everyone.
At this moment, our school district is running at one hundred percent.
Absolutely.
I hope we keep it there. Now, our next agenda item is our finance report.
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve items one through twenty-five. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Our next agenda item, building grounds and security.
The Building, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motions for the Linden Board of Education for Approval, number one through number three. I ask for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a fourth, too.
Okay, fall off my page. I'm sorry, you gave me the white page, yep, my bad. Okay, one through four, I apologize. I ask for a second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
I would like to recuse myself from item four, yes to all other items.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Our next agenda item, our Planning and Policy Report.
The Planning and Policy Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for Approval. I approve item one. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
You can call, we'll deal with it. Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Ms. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Did you need to, you're gonna recuse yourself on-
Yes.
Number four.
Four, yeah. Should I say it? Do I need to say it?
Board accepts that she's changed her vote on item number four.
On buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds from yes to recusal. No objections?
No objections, and?
Thank you.
No, it has a recusal.
Okay, I know a lot of you guys have a lot to say as to what happened just a couple of minutes ago. So this is a section I want to hear from you. This is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize or raise your hand feet here on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all the individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Craig Haller in one-twenty Donovan Place. I'd like to talk about Deerfield Terrace School, number nine. I was talking to one of the residents up there, and he's telling me that there was a lot of trash, bottles, and garbage on the grounds. And, you know, I was thinking about this after I talked to this resident. And, you know, I know it's hard to cut grass and stuff like that and get everything up off the grass before you cut it. You know, I know when I cut grass many years ago, I always walked across the grounds that I had to cut to see whether or not there was anything that would cause any problem. So what I'm proposing is that maybe the school district should do a shared service agreement with the city and basically combine building the grounds here and building the grounds in the city and get a combined force of workers to take care of the grounds. That might be an idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, Donna Hernandez, one-three-three Princeton Road. Under building and grounds, you said somebody, there was a number four. Can you say what number four is? It's not in the agenda, and it's not on the online agenda.
Yes, we received a notice earlier today that the Mayor's Youth Commission wants to give, have their annual bookbag giveaway, and they thought it would be best to hold it in an indoor location for weather purposes. So it will be held on August twenty-eighth at school number one here in the cafeteria and gymnasium.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, I want to say, congratulations, everybody. And you know how we have such wonderful staff, administrators, teachers, paras, everybody. So it's glad, I'm glad to see that our, between the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, our principals are being filled with staff that's already in district and not getting someone out of district. So I'm glad to see that. Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez, I want to thank you. This Board wants to thank you for all the hard work you put into our high school PTA. I have seen you come to a PTA meeting, and sometimes you're the only person there, but you always show up. You know, we have to be reminded that it takes a village to raise a child. We need that village to show up at PTA meetings, because that's what makes our school work as one. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sofanee Lewis. I am Annabelle Lewis' mother. It is with great honor. I can stand here to tell you, it's only one thing I want to say, because I don't have no words. I want to say praise the Lord. I want to say praise the Lord. You don't know anything about me. You don't know anything about us. I came here as poor as I could be in this country. I have four children. God promised me that he will be with me, but I never knew that he will take my children that far. Places I'd never seen for myself, places I'd never be for myself. All my children, they're all now, they are leaders. They are helping the community, the society. And for Annabelle, my second child, I want to thank you, all of you, for helping her to be today. It's nothing that we have done, but God has done it for me.
Absolutely.
And I know if you have children, he will do it for you also. I used to believe in God since my birth, and until today, I trust God. He came from very far with us, and today we are here. Thank you, and praise the Lord.
Anyone else have anything to share at this moment? Is there anyone online?
You know, Rob has to get in there.
I was surprised.
I mean, I don't know. Nothing I say is gonna follow. This is my mom, but I'm gonna try my best. All right, Rob Mengele, eighteen Trinity Place, Moncler, New Jersey. LEA president, LHS Social Studies teacher. Don't like that noise. So a lot of folks who work in schools, I know, I know I catch flack from my friends who don't work in schools that we only work ten months. But as Mrs. Perkins pointed out, our summer programs are in their final stages. Today, I know we, there were gallery walks and program exhibitions for our STEM program, for our bridge programs. At the high school and middle schools, we helped students recover tons and tons of credits. It was really cool to watch as students, you know, knuckle down and got their work done, so that way they could, they could move forward. It's really, it's always a really powerful experience to be a part of. At the elementary school, our teachers and paraprofessionals, social workers and counselors built programs to help students stop the summer slide. I know, Dr. Burghammer, you were concerned about that on Tuesday. The work, the work is done year-round by school staff, and I hope that, I know that doesn't get forgotten by the folks in this space, but for posterity's sake, the work continues. And it's important that we note that. Mrs. Perkins, you talked a lot about strengthening relationships, and I'm excited to continue to strengthen the relationship between the staff and the administration by, you know, as the district continues to fill out its administrative team, as we continue to hire more and more folks to come in, it's, there's an excitement. There's an excitement, and that excitement is something that we can capitalize on together, all in the name of the students to move forward together. I'm excited about this. A real hearty congratulations to Ms. Lewis, to Ms. Principato. It's well-earned, well-deserved, looking forward to working with you both. On a personal note, Ms. Crawley, thank you for being a partner at the high school. Ms. Crawley was the freshman vice principal this year. I taught predominantly freshmen, so we spent a lot of time together, and she was an asset at the high school. She will be sorely missed, and whoever steps into her shoes has big shoes to fill. With the end of the summer programs, I guess my summer officially begins at the end of this meeting. I'll see you guys in August. Thank you, everybody. Good evening, Ms. Perkins, Mr. Olivera, esteemed members of the Board of Education and the community. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Annabelle Lewis and her new appointment as our Assistant Superintendent for Support. I've had the honor and privilege of working alongside of her for almost the past decade. Ms. Lewis was one of my mentors when I was a social work student. She was my supervisor when I was a school social worker, and she stood along by my side in my first year as being a school administrator. Now, today, she becomes our new Assistant Superintendent of Support. I have no doubt that with Ms. Perkins, Mr. Olivera, and Ms. Lewis at the helm, we're bound for greatness. Ms. Lewis's commitment to our children is second to none, and it truly is heart-melting and heart-warming. I know that we're bound for greatness, as I said, so I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Lewis in her new role. So, Ms. Lewis?
Is there anyone online?
No.
Thank you very, very much for all what you have just shared. Before we move on, I would like Mr. Olivera, he has some information to share with us about our CTE program that's coming up in our next school year, as well as our after-school program.
Thank you. So I have three updates for the Board. The first one is our pre-K. We currently have ninety-six students that were placed in both the Head Start and the district school. We only have nine seats remaining at the Head Start. The Head Start provider will be having an open house on Monday, July thirty-first. Superintendent Perkins' birthday, by the way. Sorry, just had to plug that in. They're also having another open house on August first. Both flyers and mailers have been gone, have gone home, so all the parents have been notified. We will have a district representative at both open houses to Greek parents and children. Next year, we continue to expand the pre-K program by adding five additional classrooms. The night school that you asked for some information, bypassing today's agenda that was approved. The ESL program, actually item number seventeen that was brought up, is going to be able to create ESL classes for parents. So we will have beginner ESL in- So we will have beginner ESL, intermediate ESL, and advanced. This will be led by Supervisor Orleans. They will also offer citizenship classes. They will also offer community resource classes, which deals with housing rights, securing insurance and benefits, and securing government IDs to help our bilingual and immigrant population in Linden. For the CTE program, curriculum writing is underway. With tonight's approval, the rest of the curriculums will begin being written and finished before the beginning of the school year. Today was a great day that showcased all the gallery walks that Superintendent Perkins mentioned and that everyone mentioned. We were able to go see the students and have them present. I'm happy to announce that, you know, the credit recovery program also worked. Nearly all the students passed who did all their credit recovery at the middle schools. So the engineering program is getting a facelift this year. They're going to be receiving new 3D printers for their classroom. They're also receiving new computers. And today was a huge event at Merck. It was the first time that Linden Public Schools participated with Rawway Public Schools at Merck campus for an RC racing STEM Day. And I am proud to announce that Linden Public Schools took first place, beating Rawway. Part of the partnership that we've established with Merck will continue in the school year by inviting guest engineers from Merck to come speak to our students in the engineering program for the CTE. We also are strengthening our partnerships with Bank of America, the local bank here in the community, which will be doing workshops and guest visits for our middle school and high school business classes. And lastly, our video production will be partnering with Queen City Films, who is a former resident of Linden, who now has his own movie studio that wants to partner our students to be able to go on movie sets and learn the business. And he'll also be coming in to do guest speaking and working with the students. So that concludes my update.
Before we move on, I would like you guys, the floor is yours.
I have a question. With the adult program, how are we advertising the ESL out there for participation?
So Ms. Orleans is going to be, by getting this approved, now she could start the work by actually advertising to all the ESL parents and all the bilingual parents within the community. In order to do any of these courses, we have to come get your permission and then from there, we'll be able. So if we want to do any other activities, we'll probably have to come to the board, ask, and then get permission to then expand out.
Copy that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job. I'm really excited about the night school for the adults. My mom's also an immigrant. She was born in Haiti, so it's just really nice that we're affording people the opportunity and bridging that disconnect between the parents and the school district because I know that when the parents don't speak English as their first language, it's really hard to sometimes to understand what's going on with your kid's schooling. But now that we're offering that, that's something that I'm really proud of and proud to be a part of. So thank you, Paul. Mr. Olivera?
You know what program I would like to see is, I don't know how it's, it can be done, but I would like to see it done. One of the problems we have in our schools is that the children cannot teach their, the parents cannot teach their children homework. It's like math, forget it. The way, I know one and one is two, but how they get to two, I don't know how. So I think that we need to have some night programs that could teach parents how to teach their children so that they could actually do homework with their children. Is there anything we could do like that?
Well, we can look into it. We have a parent university that we've offered over the years. And actually, Ms. Lewis played an active role with getting those parent universities in here and those, we can put, give them topics that can help with supporting our students. And then we can also look into seeing how that can be embedded into the adult school if it's possible.
Absolutely. We can also probably do exactly what we did with the Special Olympics, sending out a survey to the community, seeing what they're interested in, and then building something that's authentic with what the community wants and needs.
Any other questions? Our next agenda item is new and unfinished business. Anything else that you guys think that we'd like to talk about, that we'd like to see in our district moving forward? This is the beginning of a new school year. This is the time for us to talk about the stuff that we would like to see happen in our school district in the next school year.
Everything is happening. It's taking its time and I'm really excited. I can't wait to make my speech, so come on. Everything is happening and I'm so excited and I'm so happy because the women on here, we run this. We run this. Give it up, we run this. So I am so happy and I'm so excited. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you know, I'm so excited, you know what I'm saying? Because we all for kids and we got to make it happen because tomorrow, yesterday, we got to make it, you know? We crawl before we walk, but God's always going to run into the finish line because it's meant for us to do it. And each one teach one, that's my motto. Each one teach, we got to pull each other up. We got to make sure everybody makes it, no matter what happens, okay? And then let's take it from there, okay? Is it my turn yet? Is it? Yes. Okay, okay. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone here. Sorry. Good evening. I'm so happy to see everyone here, teachers, students, parents. Thanks for coming out. Let's keep coming. And you know what? I'm so happy, I'm so related because looking back from where we was at before, it was a struggle. It was a fight. Now we laughing and we joking and we having a good time. People are smiling, people are saying thank you. We didn't get that before. And to the two retirees, congratulations, Mr. Denise and Mr. Michael, congratulations. You guys deserve it because working in school for 20 something years, that's a long time. And even five years is a long time, but to keep going in, saying that you're doing it for the children, you have to love the children, no matter what, no matter what. And yes, we are rocking. And as Ms. Perkins said, wow, this is a wow moment. Let's take it in because you know what? We got work to do. We're not finished. We got work to do. And we won, we're the top, the children are excelling, so that means we're doing something right. Parents is doing something right. Teachers, I applaud you. I applaud you because it's a hard job to do it. It's really hard. And then when you don't have the help that you think you don't have, but it's here, keep on trucking, keep moving because we got you. We got you and going to keep on moving, but I'm so happy, I'm really happy and I'm ecstatic because women rock. Who run the world? We do. Who run the world? We do. Who run the world? We do. There you go. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. But thank you so much for coming. We appreciate you so much and everything, you know? So thank you very much. Applause to everyone that's here. Thank you very much and have a great evening and finish enjoying the summer, okay? Because it's hot. It's hot, okay? Enjoy yourself. Thank you very much for coming.
Ms. Diane Irvin?
Really? You're going to catch me like that? Yes. Good evening, all. I'm so glad to be here. I'm seeing the changes. I am seeing the progress. I am seeing the growth, not only with the new staff, with the new members, but with you guys, with the parents, with your support, being here and coming and being with us and asking questions and, and just being here, giving us your presence, your time, that is, for me, is the most valuable thing. Thank you. Thank you. To the retirees, thank you for your service. Thank you for caring for our kids. For the newcomers, the newcomers that, but they've been part of the system, welcome. We hope that you have a great time. This is a great responsibility, but I know that you know. And this is very rewarding to be part of this and to be able to see the changes and to see the growth, I think is the most gratifying feeling that you can have. Thank you. Thank you, guys. This is a great group of people. I love to be here, so thank you.
We love you too.
Okay. Hey, the only man here, I'm sorry. First and foremost, the retirees, Ms. Hughes and Mr. White, thank you for your service. Mr. White, you must have left an impression on my daughter because she does talk about you when she was a McManus. I know she's in the high school, she's going to be a junior, and she still talks about Mr. White. Let me go visit Mr. White. She doesn't say anything about Ms. Perkins, but she says Mr. White, okay? So thank you for your service. Congratulations to our scholarship students and all the students that Ms. Perkins mentioned, congratulations. She was going too quick, so I couldn't write down the names. So now, I've been on this board now two and a half years and the first year we came, everything was basically virtual because of COVID. So we would, virtual, we would get torn up virtual, they would yell at us, we didn't do anything good. Hence, let's move a little forward. We came back in person. We got even bumpier. We had long nights here. We were blamed for people leaving after COVID. We were still blamed for people retiring after COVID. We were blamed for everything, this board. Hence, now I got what, another six months left on the board. Hopefully, we'll rerun and hopefully we'll get voted in again. But if I don't, it's been an experience and now this is one of the happiest moments that I see. The building blocks that we had, that, yes, we had the rough edges that we did. If I knew this was going to be the outcome for what we were doing in the past, I would do it again and I would not stop doing it because this is what we wanted to do, is move this district forward. And this year, we have taken it by storm. And whatever's coming our way, we are running it over and going positive and we're all growing together. So I want to thank our new administration. I want to thank the new administration coming to board and the ones that are moving around and moving on up. And yes, when you hire within, it has more of a positive impact on the rest of your staff.
Absolutely.
And I hope, and I hope we keep doing that moving forward, but sometimes, not all the time, within, we will have the best pick of the litter and sometimes we have to pick outside. So we have to do changes also, we have to make changes again. But guys, moving forward, if I'm still on this board 2024 to 2027, I plan to come on strong again and move forward with you guys again. And I'm going to close it out with, join the Linden Class of 2024 High School for the Car Wash, August 7th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, rain day. I say if it's raining, let's wash the cars anyway, which ways they need to cool off. But the rain day is August 8th, just reminder. Thank you, guys. Have a great night. Congratulations to everybody.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off by saying a happy retirement to Ms. Hughes and Mr. White. Please enjoy your retirement and thank you for your service. To all the students who have accomplished those amazing academic achievements, as mentioned by Ms. Perkins, congratulations and I wish you much success in your educational career. Congratulations to Ms. Principato, who is actually my Italian teacher. And congrats to Ms. Lewis and Ms. Crawley and all newly appointed staff. I'm looking forward to working with you all. Mr. Olivera, thank you for all that you're making possible for our students. It's very exciting to hear. Thank you. And Ms. Perkins, you're doing amazing.
I guess it's my turn. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to start by congratulating the retirees, Ms. Hughes and Mr. White. Thank you for your time in our school district. You guys are definitely appreciated. I would also like to congratulate the students that were highlighted by Superintendent Perkins. Again, that's just, that just speaks to how well our students are excelling, but also our staff and administrators and the phenomenal jobs that you guys are doing. I would also like to speak to our new appointments, Ms. Annabelle Lewis, Ms. Principato, and Ms. Crawley. You guys are truly pillars in the community and you guys frequently go above and beyond. And I'm not just saying that because it's something that sounds good, it's something that I personally experienced. And whether you guys know it or not, you guys have all had, you guys have all impacted my life on a personal level because I've had the pleasure of experiencing you guys as I progressed throughout our school district. So I'm so excited to have you guys on board. I love the fact that you guys are in-house. It's just a true testament that, you know, hard work does pay off and I am so excited to see what you guys accomplish. So thank you and a big congratulations to you three ladies. And also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention how stylish our staff is. You guys came and you guys showed out, so big congratulations to you ladies. And Ms. Annabelle Lewis, I'm so glad that I didn't wear makeup today because your mom stole the show. I got all teary eyed. So thank you for that. But yeah, I'm really excited about next school year and I, as the summer has started, well, I shouldn't say started because we're, it feels like we're almost done with the summer, but things have slowed down a little bit and I've had time to realize how much I really enjoyed being on the board. When I first started, I was really nervous. I didn't really know what to expect, although I did get some guidance and, you know, hear things from people. But I really enjoyed being a part of this Board of Education and I just want to thank the parents, the staff, and the administrators for just making this such an enjoyable experience for me. I don't want to rush the summer because I'm enjoying it, but I'm always excited for the school year to start again because I miss going to the activities, the softball games, the car washes, the fundraisers, everything. So I'm just, I really had an enjoyable experience and I'm looking forward to our next school year. So thank you, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to congratulate Ms. Lewis, Ms. Principato, Ms. Crawley, and to all the new appointed staffs. Also, thank you to the retirees, Denise Hughes and Michael White. "Life is 10% what happens to you and 90% on how you react to it." Let me repeat that. "Life is 10% what happens to you and 90% how you react to it," said the famous educator and author Charles R. Swindell. "Life for each one of us has different meanings and definitions. The goals, dreams, and aspirations that we have defines how we form and shape our lives. Choose to react with resilience, positivity, and a growth mindset. Your attitude and response to life changes determines your ultimate outcome. I have recently experienced great losses, but I try my best to keep a smile on my face and have an upbeat personality. My smiles and laughs feel empty at times, but I have, I have to keep pushing forward, especially for my family. The point that I'm trying to make is that we never know what another individual might be experiencing or enduring. Compassion, empathy, and respect makes a big difference. Tonight, I heard words like strengthening relationships, collaboration, communication, and commitment. That makes me feel proud and I'm happy to see that this district is moving forward." On another subject, I hope you're all enjoying your summer and please continue reading throughout the summer break, even if it's for a couple minutes a day. Consistency is key and learning is a never-ending process. In closing, please be kind and thoughtful to one another. Have a great.
Guys, we have a great board.
Before you continue, you want to see if Jennifer has any comments because...
Yes, Ms. Fleming?
Yes, I'm here. I was waiting my turn so patiently here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I didn't really get the opportunity because I'm sitting at home... So I didn't really get the opportunity because I'm sitting at home online because I have an upcoming surgery, so I just wanted to be the one to put that out there. I'm preparing for another surgery, and it's going to knock the wind out of me. I can barely get through the day right now. So thank you, I would just like to say thank you for, you know, letting me, allowing me to do this online so that I can still be present yet in bed. So I appreciate you, I really do. And I also, I would like to acknowledge our new superintendent, Ms. Perkins. I love you, Ms. Perkins. The goal that you stated, building relationships, not only does our school and our community need to have that goal in mind, the world needs to have that goal. You are a spectacular mind, and I am so glad and so honored that I was here when you got to the board, when you got to the superintendent. So I really do appreciate you. I'm so excited and I'm so glad to be able to work with you, even if it's for a moment. So thank you for coming here. Oh, and happy birthday if I don't see you on the 31st, because I believe that is your birthday. So I just want to say congratulations, I'm moving on. Thank you, I'm moving on. All right, so the retirees, congratulations to the retirees. I never know what to say except, you know, congratulations, thank you for your hard work, your dedication to our community, to our school district, for the year after year after year, getting out of bed, coming to work on those days when you didn't want to, when you didn't feel like it, when it was raining, when it was snowing, and all of those days. So thank you for your hard work. Congratulations, have a great retirement. Try to stay busy, no matter where you're at, try to stay busy. And to our students, that's why we're all here, we're here for you. So if you're watching, if you read this in the future, if somebody will just tell you, we really are here for you. You have so many people on your side, you know, that has your back, that wants you to do well. We're listening. Speak up, ask for what you need, because a closed mouth does not get fed. So speak up, ask for what you need, we're listening, we are here for you. To the teachers, again, thank you for getting up. I know I said this last time, but you know, it just rings true every day. Thank you for getting up every day, coming to work every day. We appreciate you. You're one of the most important people. You have one of the most important jobs, probably in the whole world. Imagine for a moment if we didn't have teachers or schools. The world would not be what it is right now. I don't even want to think of what it would be. So just thank you for getting up every day and coming to the school, even when you don't feel appreciated, even when you're not feeling 100% thank you for dedicating your life. To the staff and the paraprofessionals, those that help our school district, thank you for what you contribute to our community. You are appreciated. It's going to be an exciting year this year. We have the absolute best in place. Look around. This is your family this year. We are one team, one fight. We have the same goal. It's going to be an amazing year. Congratulations to Ms. Crowley, Ms. Principato, Ms. Annabelle Lewis, Ms. Annabelle Lewis's mom. That was amazing. You touched my heart. But congratulations, Ms. Annabelle Lewis, on your new role as super assistant superintendent. And thank you to your mom. Thank you for raising such an honorable child. And I think you had more than one, so thank you for raising honorable children. It really speaks to the job that you have done as a mother when they reach such high peaks in life and are still able to reach down and help others pull them up. So thank you for making such great children. She deserves it. She's worked hard. She's earned it. She's got it. Let's see, while some of our staff may be transferring and others staying where you are, we are excited to see what you're going to do this year. Thank you for being flexible. Thank you for being outstanding at what you do. To the parents and guardians, thank you for working alongside of us in preparing our children for the upcoming year. We are excited on the direction that we are headed this year, and we are confident that with your help, we will continue working hard for the best possible future for our children. There are so many things on this month's agenda. It excites me to vote yes. It is on there because of the hard work from our staff. So thank you to our staff. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Olivera. Thank you, Donna. Thank you, everybody in the office. Thank you. I was so excited to see so many things being fixed, getting better. Donna Hernandez, you're always there. Thank you for your hard work at the PTA. We really do appreciate you. You show up every, every time, every month, every meeting, every PTA. And I also want to mention the after, what is the after-school work with the teaching for the public, that, that whole thing, that, that's amazing. I think that's a great idea because to have a great city, you have to strengthen the entire community. So it's amazing that we're doing this. I think it's absolutely amazing. So congratulations for whoever came up with this great idea. It's amazing. And thank you for listening to me. We have an amazing district. Ms. Diane Aronoff, I'm so happy to see you, even if it's on the screen. You were missed. We love you. I am so glad that you are back and that I am seeing you on the screen even. And Sam, I'm sorry, you know, you are surrounded by a bunch of women. We have females surrounding you, you poor guy, you're there all by yourself. But you know, Sam, it takes, it takes a strong man to stand with all these women and want to come back and want to come back. So Sam, I am so glad that I got to serve with you on the board. I am so, so glad that you were with me every step of the way, and although I won't be running for the board again because I'm, I'm toast, I'm tired, okay? I am so, I have so much admiration for you for keeping going. I think you're just the best. So I'll see you at that car wash, I guess, on August 27th, 28th. Thank you for reminding me, the 27th, I guess, rain day.
August 7th, Jen.
Oh, August 7th. I thought you said 27. Thank you, Sam. I will not be there on the 7th because I'll be under getting, getting surgery on the 7th. So run your car through twice for me, okay?
Copy that.
Anyways, thank you. I love our diverse board. You guys excite me. You guys pumped me up today. Even in my shape right now, I was pumped up on this meeting, so thank you. Have a great night, and I'll see you in a month or two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I know, Mr. Devane, you are here because you are going out to dinner after, so I'm not going to speak long. I know you and your friends, you going celebrating tonight. I could see you guys starting to get restless, so I'm not going to keep you here much longer. Only one thing I want of you tonight from me. I want us all to sing "Happy Birthday" to our superintendent. Could we do this?
Yes, we can.
Yes, come on.
Which version?
Which one?
Because there's two.
Stevie won the version, oh, which one now? You know how we do.
Right.
Come on.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
There you go.
Thank you. I turned 50. And you don't look it.
You look, you look good, girl. You look good.
And I just want to say, you know, as you move into a milestone for a birthday, you also have to reflect on where you've come from and more importantly, where you want to go. And this is where I want to go with you all, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
But without further ado, I would like someone to make a, a, a...
Motion to adjourn.
I didn't make more mystic tonight.
I did it. Motion to adjourn.
Second, second, second.
Roll call.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
And Dr. Bergammar?
Yes. Me adjourned.